Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the West Covina City Council meeting. First, we will begin our meeting with our invocation led by Pastor Doug Wilson and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Herbert. Please rise. Mr. Freeland, is Pastor Doug Wilson here this evening?
I don't see Doug.
There's a lot of people can't see. So I would like to ask our city manager if that's okay to lead us in the invocation this evening.
Yes. Heavenly Father, righteous and holy, we pray and petition you this evening and ask that you help those in need, and we ask that you watch all those that are in this meeting today and bless them with your loving kindness. Guide us to help others when it's in our ability to do so, have patience with us when we fall short of your expectations. May your Spirit bring peace and love to all who call upon your name, and may your honor and glory be yours forever. Amen.
Please join with me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor Chairman Sanderson here. Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chairman Herbert. Councilmember Commissioner Lane here. Councilmember Commissioner Tui.
Here.
No reports, Mr. City Attorney, out of closed session. You want to brief the community on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, there was no closed session this evening, no need after all, and therefore, there was no quorum, and that meeting was not held.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we do have one change on the agenda, and that pertains to item number 14, which was an appeal hearing on Clear Wire wireless communications facility. And this afternoon, we did receive a letter from Clear Wire, who has decided to withdraw its appeal, and they did submit a letter to the city council, which I placed in front of your dais. In that letter, they addressed the trying to take into consideration the community interest, and that's one of the reasons they decided to withdraw their application. I don't know whether you wish to add to that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the city manager has indicated that the correspondence, which will be part of the record, has been submitted. This means that the appeal that's before you this evening is not on your agenda, not on your calendar, it's not within your consideration. There will be no cell tower constructed. The planning commission has previously revoked the conditional use permit, and as the city manager did indicate, Clear Wire is recognizing the concerns of the community and its desire to be a good corporate citizen in its efforts to participate in West Covina, and as a result, they are not going to be developing that site.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, since we're not going to be having the hearing, so those that have the cards...
Those that came to speak, there'll be no hearing.
We're not having a hearing. So, thank you guys for coming and your hard work, and I know that the...I'd heard from city manager's office that the Clear Wire wanted to be a good, you know, business and listen to the residents, and, you know, we appreciate you all being here this evening. And I do have the hearing cards, but we will not be using those this evening.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. So, I can give him a minute. At this time, we will begin our presentation portion. I see a lot of people sitting out here tonight, and we're really glad to have you here. I've seen you about the community, and we really do appreciate what you guys do. I think it's just amazing. And with that, I'd like to call forward Mr. Frank, our police chief, Wills, to come forward. We have the West Covina Police Explorers competed in the 2010 Police Explorers X Games in Pasadena this summer. Chief, you'd like to come forward and talk a little bit about it?
Thank you, Mayor. Why give an intro? Could Captain Dwyer and all the explorers come up and line up on my right and the mayor's right here? You know, folks, sometimes when you reach a certain age, it's easy to think that our young people are falling apart, and all they do is stay at home and play video games all day, but if you see what our Boy Scout teams are doing, and our youth hockey, and our Little League teams, and the championship athletic teams, and scholars, our schools turn out, you gotta feel real good about the future of the country, and especially the future of West Covina. And another example of the great young people we have in the city of West Covina is our explorers. Last August, they competed in a regional competition in Pasadena, the X Games, with 18 other explorer units from other police departments, and it's been several months, but we've had so many programs here before council meetings that it took us a while to get them onboard. But for an unprecedented fourth consecutive year, our explorers came in first place in the field, four years in a row. I'm gonna read their names. We don't have plaques for everybody, and interest of time, Captain Keith Dwyer. And then we have Lieutenant Eli Hakua, I don't know if he's here tonight, Sergeant Alejandro Martinez, Sergeant Chris Sandoval, Corporal Christian Hernandez, Explorer Nick Lopez, Explorer Christian Lopez, Explorer Jake Glick, Jorge Nunez, Daniel Gonzalez, Destiny Martinez, Crystal Martinez, Jasmine Flores, Nestor Ramirez. If you come to our annual Fourth of July event and a lot of other community activities, you see them donating their time on the weekends to direct traffic, maintain safety, and serve this community. And in the back, there are explorer advisors that also do this for no money. Brandon Carmen, big tall guy in the back, Daddy Aramis, thank you, guys. And then, in the back, Brian Prizzy here, also West Covina High School graduate and wrestling coach on top of that, and he advised them and led them to a championship and victory in the games. We do have individual ones? I can...
We have 2010 Explorer X Games competition first place team recognition, and the council would like to congratulate you and make sure you guys know how much we appreciate what you do in representing this community, and we wanted to...we do have several of them. And we have the names. Mr. Freeland, they are all...okay, we do have certificates. Do you want to read them again?
If you will pull up the picture. Nestor Ramirez. Explorer Daniel Gonzalez. Jorge Nunez. Christian Hernandez. Sergeant Chris Sandoval. Sergeant Alejandro Martinez. Captain Keith Dwyer. Congratulations. And Keith, this is for the entire floor. Keep the crowd in, if you want to get a group photo.
Probably enjoy the best part of the meeting. Come on down, guys.
Next on our agenda, we have the California Contract Cities Presentation. I'd like to call forward Mayor Donald Voss from the city of La Cañada, Flint Ridge, who's here as a member of the Contract Cities Board of Directors. Good evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I am Don Voss, and the mayor of La Cañada, Flint Ridge. I didn't envision following the Clearwater Tower item or the explorers, but I'll give it a try. I'll do my very best. I am a member of the Executive Board of the California Contract Cities Association, and I'm here to provide a brief update on contract cities. I realize that West Covina is not currently a member of the association, but I believe the city has been a member in the past, so I'm here to just to help maintain contact between the city and the association, and to let you know what the association has been up to. The California Contract Cities Association was formed in 1957 when cities that were incorporating under the contracting plan of government, then known as the Lakewood Plan, found they had unique and important issues specific to contract cities. Purpose of the contract cities is to serve cities contracting for the performance of municipal services through education, advocacy, networking, organization, and administration. All cities that contract for some...all the cities that are members contract for some type of service, all the cities can benefit from our educational programs. We had a very good fall seminar just recently, which was an excellent seminar, one of the best I've ever been to. Low membership dues based upon population or assessed value. There are networking opportunities with veteran and new council members for a broad perspective on serving your communities. There are networking opportunities with our associate members, proven contractors and businesses seeking to partner and serve your communities. There is proactive legislative advocacy for member cities on local government issues, revenues, and unfunded mandates. The Contract Cities has saved our cities, members of the association, millions of dollars through the following accomplishments: supported, advocated, and won passage of 7% property tax for no and low tax cities back in 1985. There was a court case involving Huntington Park and Lomita versus the County of Los Angeles concerning ambulance services. That was in 1989. Successfully stopped California Legislature planned to swap sales tax for property tax at the local level. That was in 2000. Have lobbied to restore VLF for the benefit of the cities. Have been part of...was part of the Coalition for Proposition 1A, which protected...helped to protect local government revenues. That was back in 2004, but it wasn't perfect. Helped to fund the "No" on Prop 98 campaign, which would have tied local governments' hands on land use issues. That was in 2005. And most recently this year, very much part of the Coalition to fund and support the "Yes on Proposition 22" campaign to stop the state from taking or borrowing local tax dollars dedicated to cities and counties to fund vital local services. I do appreciate your time this evening and hope that we can continue to stay in touch. Perhaps one of these days, the time will be right for West Covina to consider rejoining contract cities. In the meantime, if there's anything we can do or answer any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Any questions, council? Thank you for being here this evening very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Just go. Andy, yeah, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District presentation. I'd like to call forward Shane Chapman, who is the General Manager of the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District and has a brief PowerPoint presentation for the community. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity to see you tonight. Let's talk briefly to you about Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. Were we gonna put something up, or... Okay, well, I'll start. Most of you are probably familiar with the district. Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District is one of 26 metropolitan member agencies. We're in the business of water supply reliability for the greater San Gabriel Valley. Very quickly, our mission really is about working on the drinking water issues, as well as investing in water conservation, recycling, and working with Metropolitan Water District to make sure the valley has a reliable water supply. Have the next slide, please. Just as a bit of background, the district was originally formed in the early '60s to address issues in the main San Gabriel Basin groundwater basin, which is beneath us here in the valley, and the overproduction of the groundwater from the basin was incorporated in January 1960, and in 1963, annexed to the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California in order to receive supplies at that time from the Colorado River Aqueduct, later from the state water project. And currently, we're in the recycled water business, which principally brings us here Little bit of geography here, we overlie much of the San Gabriel Valley, starting from the west side of Covina all the way over to South Pasadena, from the mountains down to about the 60 freeway corridor. And we have five divisions, five directors, Dr. Tony Fellow, Charles Trevino, Ed Chavez, who represents a portion of West Covina, Bill Robinson, who represents another portion of West Covina there in Division Four. About 1.3 million people today in the service area. Seventeen cities served, 22 retail water agencies purchased water from us or produce it from the groundwater basin, which we're involved in replenishing. And today, we have a $31 million operating budget and about a $30 million capital budget, the majority of that in water recycling. Some quick background, rather than sharing charts, tables, some more arcane information, an excellent reference for the public and yourselves to track the changing condition of Southern California's water supply situation is this site, bewaterwise.com. That information is current, it's pertinent, it gives you a general sense of how Southern California water reliability is faring in a particular year, and that's an example there. We're all familiar with the gas gauge on our car. Right now, we're a little above quarter full, so we've recovered somewhat, still in an allocation from the Metropolitan Water District of water supplies, doing well based on last winter in Northern California, starting to recover some storage levels here in Southern California now and in this basin. And unfortunately, the Colorado River, Lake Mead, unfortunately, is at record low levels still, so, great sight, they've got good videos up there for you. Next one. How does that translate to the situation here in the valley? Apologize for the fonts on this chart, but what we're looking at here in the blue is the groundwater level within the basin beneath us, measured in mean sea level in feet on the vertical axis. The red line is 200 feet. Red line, we don't want to be below that red line. We start to have problems below that red line, and experienced some problems just recently in 2010, early 2010, when we hit a record low level of 189 feet. The wells on the periphery of the basin and up towards the foothills started to dry up. We've since recovered some, both from a decent winter, really an average winter, and purchasing water supplies from Metropolitan Water District to put those into the basin. Just above that red line now, we'll be working aggressively to continue to replenish the basin. It's a great basin. You can see in 2005, stepping back a bit, almost a near-vertical line with that wet El Nino winter in 2005, this basin recovers very quickly. Many in Southern California don't, so we're fortunate to be right here at the base of the foothills at the mouth of the San Gabriel Canyon. Very generally for you, where does the water come from here in the valley? Local precipitation, the groundwater, and the runoff from the mountains is the lion's share of it, 74% you can see there. Again, apologize, that chart got messed up. That's 144,000 acre feet. An acre foot is one of those arcane terms we use in the water sector, 326,000 gallons, still a little hard to visualize. A football field is roughly an acre. So, stack that up, 144,000 acre feet. A lot of water comes out of this groundwater basin every year to serve the communities within the valley. The next largest share, about 35,000 acre feet a year, comes through the imported water system, principally the state water project, some from the Colorado River Aqueduct, and that comes through the Metropolitan Water District. We're involved in then distributing that water within the valley. Conservation, a big push with that. We've been doing about an estimated 10,000 acre feet so far with the active investments in conservation. And recycled water is starting to take hold in the valley and here in West Covina, and we'll take a quick look at that. Some of the water supply challenges that are driving the investment in the recycled water, we live in a semi-arid desert, that's no surprise to anyone. We consume more water across Southern California than Southern California can naturally produce. There's enough water in Southern California generally for about 9 million people, and we're over double that in the six counties the Metropolitan Water District serves. There are some legal and legislative limits. Endangered Species Act is an example that are restricting pumping in the Bay Delta area for importing water to Southern California from Northern California. And the economic situation, we all have to be cognizant of that today, so that's slowing down some of the infrastructure investment. The next one. Upper District, like many water districts today, is aggressively involved in recycled water. If you see purple pipe going in the ground, that's what's going on. It's an abundant and cost-effective resource. It reduces that need directly acre foot for acre foot to import water into Southern California. Principally, it's used for irrigation, groundwater replenishment, and industrial cooling processes. Today, Upper District is targeting irrigation customers exclusively. $52 million program. We've got, when we'll be done, we'll have almost 35 miles of pipe, tanks, some pump stations. That's all operated by the local water purveyors for us. Some jobs created, and we're about 50% complete with the program today. Next one. Specifically here in the city of Azusa, we're got quite a bit of pipe going in the ground over towards the west side, the left there on Azusa Avenue. We have a main going up Azusa Avenue, that's in the ground and serving water today, and then it sort of doglegs over to the west, the red going up to Amar and then along Amar west to east. All of the red is done. Not all of the retrofits are done, but we are today out of the street on Amar, and just today on Nogales, down on the southern, on the eastern side there in the red, just yesterday, we started serving the first recycled water in the city of West Covina. So this program's coming together. We will start in the green going up Azusa Avenue, probably in early to mid-February. The construction itself will start. We're working very closely with Mr. Shannon Yatsi, Mr. Dave Nichols, and your Public Works Department, and making sure we pay attention to their restrictions, their work times, traffic issues, et cetera. It's a very busy thoroughfare stating the obvious. We picked a very good contractor with a lot of pipe experience. We're gonna get in and out of Azusa just as quickly as we can, and then start going east to west on Vine. Two-lane street, little different situation. There's a school up there, elementary school, we have to pay attention to that, a lot of traffic around that elementary school. We're gonna try and time things, so we go through there after school's out. That's the most sensible time to do that, otherwise, there will be some issues, and we certainly don't want to cause that. Planning in the orange to go into design along Creekside, Shadow Oak and La Puente Road in early February, we'll put out a bid for design. And in the light blue over there, that's the fourth package, that'll be coming along as well. Again, coordinating closely with your staff, they do an outstanding job of working with us. They're not shy about telling us early and often when we're going astray. I like that. I like to fix problems while they're small, and just move right along.
I have a question, if I can ask, on this green line going up here. Why was that chosen? Why wasn't there consideration given to going up past Big League Dreams up over the hill that's not developed yet?
We are right next to Big League Dreams there, where Amar and Azusa, just north of there, that little red dogleg that comes over is Big League Dreams there, and that's one of our customers.
Yeah, but we have a road that goes up there, and it's not developed yet all the way up to the top, but it just seems like that might be a better alternative, because I know where you're going is to the country club, correct?
Yeah, ultimately at the end of Vine there. Yeah, I apologize, newly minted general manager, I just left Metropolitan Water District, so the specifics of the design are not up top my head.
Shannon, can you fill us in on that? Because we're gonna tear up a major arterial street in the city and a major...
I think part of the challenge of taking an alternate route is you'd end up going through the hilly area there where there's no streets, and I think they wish to remain in a paved street so they can service and repair the lines. We have been working with them and coordinating their work and our paving, so that as soon as they're done with their work on Azusa, we've been holding off paving that, and we'll come through after them and do all of that paving, so the street is like new.
Okay, so there was no consideration given to the golf course and using reclaimed water there, because that would be the path to take?
Actually, we do have an agreement with the Upper District that when the golf course is developed, they will pump reclaimed water to it at their cost.
Okay, I'll just wrap things up here. Actually, that concludes it. Questions?
Any questions?
Well, I just, you know, comment, you know, we just had the lower part of Azusa torn up, and, you know, we get a lot of complaints from people when our streets are torn up. Fortunately, that street hasn't been paved going to Vine. I believe Shannon worked with you, and so we haven't paved that one yet, but will you be, I assume we'll be fully paving the street after they're done? Is that correct? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next on our agenda is the carpool lane presentation from Caltrans. I have Sharie Shabashian with Caltrans, Senior Transport Engineer, and providing the council with an update on the design and timeline for the construction of the carpool lanes along Interstate 10 through West Covina.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here tonight and to give you a presentation on the Route 10 HOV project. Before we go on to the presentation, I'd like to point to the board that we have there just to give you a brief background on the 10 HOV project. Limits of this project is from 605 to 57, and it's been divided into three segments. Segment one is from 605 to Puente, that is currently under construction now. The segment two is from Puente to Citrus Avenue, and segment three from Citrus to 57. Both segments two and three are currently under construction, and with that, I'd like to introduce my colleagues that are here and are involved with this project. Mehdi Salihnik is the project manager for segment one and three. I'm the project manager for segment two. And I have Jennifer Tyra, she's our senior landscape architect for the entire segment. And Mohammed Hanum, he's the project engineer for segment two. And Rufio Dominguez is the design manager for segment three. Next slide. This is a...the title sheet will be part of the contract plans of the segment two. It shows the limits of the project from Puente to Citrus. Next slide, please. And this is a typical cross-section of the freeway that shows the new median shoulder, the HOV lane in each direction, the four mixed flow lanes, 12-foot lanes, the auxiliary lane, a new 10-foot shoulder, and the sound walls. This project proposes to construct one HOV lane in each direction, and also will construct sound walls at warranted location to protect the residences. Because of the HOV lane, we'll have increased vehicular traffic, so we'll have to...
Can I interrupt you for a second there? This is a major concern for the city of West Covina, these sound walls, because the freeway corridor is our bread and butter for sales tax.
Yes.
And from some of the input that I've received already, your sound walls will impact the commercial business sector of our city, so can you assure us tonight that you're not gonna put sound walls in front of car dealerships and retail businesses?
Right, one car dealership in particular, the Audi dealership, is being affected by the sound wall. We've had meetings with the city council with Shannon, and we've provided with alternatives as to build it or not to build it. Right now, we're trying to find a solution that will be...that will protect the public as well as the commercial areas that...we understand that that's a big concern for us.
It's vital to us, really.
Councilmember Tui.
Likewise, that also protects the public, because 50% of our income is generated off of our auto dealers and our... off of our auto dealers and our mall. And I understand where you want to start your wall. I happen to have some property in another city where you just put a twenty-foot wall in front of it, and it makes it very much so less desirable for commercial applications if you can't see it. If you can't see the Audi dealership, I know it affects us anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred thousand a year. I know that may not be a lot in the Caltrans budget, but it's a lot for us. And second of all, I appreciate you doing the HOV lanes and going through and doing all your work, but it seems like they have a lot of suits that work at Caltrans and not enough people that actually pick up and pick up trash and weed eat the off-ramps and the freeways. We need a couple more people. You have ten people, I believe, that work in Caltrans in our whole geographical area.
Right.
And there's thousands of suits in downtown LA. We need some of the trash picked, all the trash picked up, and the weeds cut down on somewhat of a regular basis.
Unfortunately, our maintenance crew are down to, you know, we don't have that many crews out available, so...
I understand that. My concern is that exact thing, that you have a lot of suits and not a lot of actual maintenance people. I think we need to reverse the numbers. Instead of having thousands of suits in downtown LA, we probably need, you know, the ten-people crew you have in downtown LA, and actually the thousands cleaning up your freeway corridors.
You have ten crews for West Covina or...?
Ten total employees, from what we understand, that cover the ten freeway totally.
Are you suggesting we go pick up the trash?
I would love for you to. It's your freeway.
Well...
But thank you for the offer. I'll make sure District Seven Director implements that.
We are aware of your concerns, so we'll try to address that. But we've been in touch, we've had meetings with Shannon, and we'll try to address your concerns. Next.
Now, if you get a master's, you'll pick up trash.
Well, it may be an overexaggeration, but sir, with all due respect, the freeway off-ramps and on-ramps in the city of West Covina and Covina, it's embarrassing. It's absolutely embarrassing.
That's not a really nice comment to make.
Well, it may be an overexaggeration, but we need some help, and we haven't gotten any help in a long time from Caltrans. I mean, we complain all the time. So hopefully, you can get the message to somebody.
All right, we'll just go to the presentation. Next, please. What we've done is the, we've superimposed the layout plans, our layout sheets onto the aerial photos. The red color is the proposed layout. It's a proposed work. The yellow is the existing features, and then you'll see the blue, that's where the sound walls go. And green would be the new right-of-way line. Next, please.
Just a quick...
This is, well, the first slide was at Puente, and this is the east of Puente. Next. And again, further out east. This is at Cameron Avenue Undercrossing, the proposed layout. This is at the Pacific Avenue, West Covina Parkway Undercrossing. Next.
What do the other colors mean, the red and the yellow and green?
Sorry?
What do the other colors mean?
Well, basically, there's four colors. The red is the proposed layout, limits of the new work. The yellow is the existing feature, the existing freeway. And green is the new right-of-way line. And then next to the green, you should see the, if there's any sound walls, you will see the blue color. That's the sound walls.
Can we go back to the Vincent Avenue design where Bob's Big Boy, AT&amp;T, and California Pizza Kitchen are being leveled?
Sure, we're not there yet, so...
No problem.
Next. This is at Sunset Avenue Undercrossing. Next, please. This is Vincent Avenue. The Bob's Big Boy is to the lower-left corner, Bob's Big Boy, the AT&amp;T store, and the California Pizza Kitchen.
What's the light blue?
The light blue in this case would be, sorry, there is no other...
I believe the way it's marked on the ground outside of California Pizza Kitchen, they no longer have a kitchen, so if you want to go and sit in the restaurant. But the blue line goes through, almost through the middle of the outside patio dining at California Pizza Kitchen. I'm not sure if Baja Fresh and Jamba Juice gets leveled in this.
Well, we have a partial take at the California Pizza Kitchen. And then the AT&amp;T and the Bob's Big Boy, unfortunately, it's a full take. What happened is the, the, the proposed alignment, once we converted, the original plans were done in metric, and now we're back to English units. So, once we converted that, we, the freeway was widened about twelve inches, about a foot. Now, the existing, the on and off ramps, the loops, what they're out there, the bottom portion, they're non-standard. The radiuses are short. So, by widening it even further, about a foot, they get, the turning radiuses get even worse. So, and then also, we have a safety concern, the weaving distance between the on and off ramps on the eastbound side, it's very short, and that proposes an accident from, so that's why we had to realign the south side of the Vincent Avenue, and we had to delete the northbound on ramp to Vincent Avenue. And unfortunately, we had to go into the mall's property.
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if it's clear for the residents, but what the expansion of the freeway does include is acquisition of property off of Westfield, and I believe that's what was being alluded to, the fact that the new off-ramp at Vincent will displace some businesses that are located right on the northeast corner. Bob's Big Boy, the AT&amp;T, I believe it is, or Verizon Store.
There's three businesses will be...
And CPK Kitchen will be affected by the new off-ramps. And perhaps when you get to the, later in your presentation here, you can identify the sound walls, because I know it's been a serious concern of a number of the businesses, because you have hotels that are being affected by twenty-foot walls or very high walls going up in front of the businesses potentially, as well as the car dealerships as well.
Sure. As I said, only when the Audi dealership is being affected, we're not putting any other, I mean, at the mall, we're not putting any sound walls there. It's a commercial area. So, next.
Just gonna mention, the light blue color was temporary construction easement.
Right. What we have, we have two partial, two full takes, full acquisition, one full acquisition, and then the rest is temporary construction easement. It's a temporary easement to build the freeway and the sound walls.
What area is that right there?
That area is Tolon and Mardina. You're taking all those homes?
No, we're not taking all of them.
No, we're not taking any homes, no.
Okay, so those are, even though the yellow line's there?
Show the layout.
Right, this is the layout. We're not taking the homes. The sound wall is gonna be right at the right-of-way line of the...
The yellow is just existing topo. It shows where, how things look like. The red is our proposed layout.
Okay.
What you see here on the top right there on the westbound, you have a few homes where you see that blue line, red, blue, whatever. That's the sound wall, it's coming about two feet away from our right-of-way. So, that's, yes, along that line right there. The property wall is still, is staying, not that much that, we're just coming in, we're gonna have the sound walls about two feet away from it, and we have temporary easement along those properties. Temporary construction easement.
Just when you look east of the Tolon Street, which is the bend in the road, those three apartment complexes were taken originally, the fronts of them, in the construction of the freeway when it was originally built, all along our quarter where we have apartments, the fronts of them were cut off, and those were this part of it. And that's way before you guys, I understand, but I mean, I'm just saying, when the freeway was built, those were originally impacted.
But we're not taking any residences, we're not taking, there's not, all that is is just temporary construction easement. And the resident gets, they get paid for giving us that easement, temporary easement. Next. This is at Lark Ellen Avenue, the layout of the freeway, similar to the others. Next. This is to the east of Lark Ellen. This is Azusa Avenue Undercrossing, layout of the freeway. And this is to the east of Azusa.
Can you go back to that one? That one's the car dealerships, right? Was that a blue line going all the way across there on the bottom?
The, this one?
Yeah.
Looks like the top, too.
That's just the center line of the front of the road.
Okay, so where would, the Audi would be the furthest dealership on the right. I don't, where's the sound wall line there?
This is the Audi, right?
Can I, sure.
I'm trying to find it out, Shannon.
This is the Audi dealer, I think.
This is the Audi dealer, and we have the wall, the sound wall, the proposed sound wall is right here at this moment. And we give the city about five different options for reducing the wall, what do I recall that number, it's about forty, sixty feet? And we keep everything as is, and then we have another proposal to remove the wall all the way up to the property line, right here between the Audi dealers and the residents. And, but we found that that's gonna be affecting on all these residents right here. So, we came and we did another option. We have the reduced wall up to here, and we built, we proposed to build a wall in between. And we asked the city, they're gonna get us what's called a help, where's the residents that we can approve that, could have to go in and build the walls in there. And we have, that's one proposal, but it's still affecting some of the top properties right there. We came and we, another proposal, that's we reduce the wall, and we have built the wall in the front of this property and along this, between the Audi dealers and the residents. But that's some negative that's gonna create noise, the change of...
It will create like a tunnel, tunnel, and the noise will vibrate more, so that's an alternative, but it's not what we're recommending. As I said, we're still looking into it, so we received letters from the city requesting us to look into the, this particular sound wall and other sound walls in front of businesses that the city would like, would like Caltrans to delete them. So, we'll, we'll get back to the city moving to...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think that we probably need to have a study session on this.
I would agree. I'm thinking I'd like copies of these, and this is kind of a substantial thing to our community. So, Mr. City Manager, would you recommend to have some form of a study session?
Yeah, I think the maps are a little difficult for you to digest at this point, so I think you might want to get better, cleaner copies, so we can perhaps superimpose the walls in the property right-of-way acquisitions.
Right.
And I also think we need to make all the businesses aware, if they're not aware of it now.
I agree, yeah.
We are planning to meet with the business owners and just get their input. If they don't, if they agree to the sound wall, then fine. If not, then we'll have to find another alternative, but...
What I would suggest is that we need to have the city present when you meet with the business people, because I know there was some concern that some meetings were held, and it was kind of a cold shock to them.
No, we provided Shannon with the, with a set of plans, eleven by seventeen, that shows the exact location of the walls, the limits of the walls. And then also, it shows where the right-of-way, new right-of-ways are.
But if we can return back to council, I think it'd be simpler if we kind of superimposed it so you can visually see it, rather than have it in engineering format that makes it a little more digestible for you.
Right.
Okay, next, please. So, Hollenbeck. This is at the Hollenbeck Undercrossing, similar to the others. Next, please.
So, I'm sorry, because I just see that blue line again. There'll be a sound wall going all the way across Hollenbeck there?
Yes.
So via Tepeyac, the restaurant will lose visibility totally.
Yeah.
That's the sound wall.
And the office building on the other side of the street will... Okay.
And there's a big office building on the north, too. Is that as far as the changes go, or is there another?
I'm sorry?
Is that at the end of the construction, or does it go down one more?
Hollenbeck is, well, that's pretty much, that's the end of segment two.
Segment three we can pick up.
And then segment three we'll pick up from there and on.
I'm sorry?
To 57.
Oh, okay.
This, the next one is segment three, not segment two.
Okay.
Yes, it's...
See, you know, I appreciate you being here. Sorry if we have a little bit of a shock, but this is a big deal to our community, since we are a freeway-based city. It is critical to us, and we need to, you know, be a part of the process as well as a business owner, so, you know, I hope that you guys will be willing to...
Yeah.
Because I don't know, you know, what, you know, what businesses are gonna do if they're blocked out of a visibility where they got freeway, you know, I don't know. So, okay.
See, our main concern was to protect the residences, because that would...
Well, absolutely, we want to make sure they're protected as well, absolutely. But we also want to make sure the businesses are, we have a lot of businesses on the freeway, so I think we can do that. I think that with a, you know, combined effort between them, I mean, we need to obviously get the residents that live in the area over by Audi involved, too, to make sure they're...
Right, I mean, there are one particular resident next to the Audi dealership, and, you know, if you don't build a wall, they won't get the benefit of the sound wall, so...
Do you expect the noise level to go up considerably with one more lane?
Well, the, what we do is, we go out and we do twenty-four-hour noise reading. We install meters, we take noise readings. Then we take this to the office, and then we have, there's a program. We have a noise study unit. That's what, that's their job is, you know, that's one of those guys with the suit. You know, so they, they sit down, there's a protocol federal mandated that we have to follow. So, we set up the program, and the program is set up such that you will, you will come up with a future noise level twenty years from now. It's not just today, it's twenty years from now that the freeway is gonna be all crowded. So, then we come up with a noise level, and that's what makes it, that we need to build the sound wall. If an existing, if the existing noise level is over sixty-seven decibel, that's the threshold, then we need to mitigate the noise by law. And once we come up with the future noise, if it's, we need to lower it by five decibel to build the wall. So, it's a tedious process.
Yeah, you're in a tough situation. But the freeway's been here a long time. I think as soon as you put the lane in, it's gonna be full anyway, right? You don't have to wait twenty years, so...
Well, that's what we have to do. I mean, we're...
It's kind of like we're just...
That's the protocol. We have to look at twenty years from now, not just today.
There's still a question how full the lane will be, because we're also, after these guys are done, the congestion management plan is coming forward where they're gonna charge you, or trying to charge you to use the HOV lane in the future, you're gonna pay. And if we don't vote for it, they're gonna withhold our gas tax money. So, they're gonna punish the city unless they support charging the residents for HOV lanes.
They must specify.
It's not, it's not the...
California Transportation Commission.
Exactly.
Right.
We're not, I'm not for it. Don't put me on the record.
I'm not saying you're for it. I'm just saying of reality, we're giving leeway, we're giving leeway for an HOV lane to put in, and if we don't support them charging our residents and other cities' residents for using the HOV lane that you're discussing, we will be punitively damaged for it, where they will withhold gas tax against us.
I think you need to discuss that with Metro and their management and get their opinion, too.
I understand. I'm just saying that...
It's not correct to say that here without them present.
Your HOV lane is what we're talking about today, them charging for the exact same lane that you're taking our freeway frontage. It's a double whammy for our residents.
I understand, sir. I'm sure they have an answer to that, so...
All they do, they'll take our money.
That's something we discussed with them.
I just wanted to make a minor correction. The city manager here was asking that, was saying that the sound walls are gonna be twenty-four feet height, which is wrong. Correction to that, the sound walls varies between ten to fourteen feet height. Depends on the location and what effect on the noise study that's coming out.
It's just, it's still gonna block business, though, yeah.
And is that from the ground or from where you do the cement support? You have like a K-rail?
Freeway, freeway.
It's freeway up?
Including the height of the...
So, it counts the K-rail?
Yes.
Kind of?
Including the height of the... Thank you, Alex. Now, the segment two is entirely... Uh, now, the, uh, segment two is entirely within the West Covina limits. Segment three, a small portion of it is within the city of West Covina. This is the, uh, the title sheet of the contract plans for the segment three. Shows the limit of the, of the project. Next, please. Uh, this is a typical cross-section, similar to, uh, segment two. Next. And these will be, will do the same, uh, similar to segment two, the layout, uh, superimposed on the aerials.
Is that Citrus?
This is at Citrus Avenue.
I know you guys don't do this, but there's a light on the north side there, northeast side at that off-ramp, right there. When you get off that off-ramp, that, that signal, no, the other side, other side, above the little loop there, no, on the north side. Right there, yeah, that signal on the off-ramp. It's been screwed up for years and, and I've gotten hundreds of complaints on that because when you get there, you gotta wait at least four minutes to get through sometimes. So, could you, see if you could fix that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanna mention something. You know, there is a need for, to improve some, sorry for the interruption. Make a request, you know, I handle this area and I haven't received a request that...
What's your name?
...is putting Refugio Dominguez, I'm the design manager for this area. Make a request and I will follow through and, uh, will handle it. But as of now, I haven't received a complaint about the light.
Shannon, have I talked to you about that? I'm sure I've talked to you a few times on that one. That's okay, I'll, I'll make the complaint. Can you handle all the lights or do you just handle the, do you handle...
I just handled a portion of Citrus to the other, just a portion of the previous with it. If it's Caltrans jurisdictions, then I will talk to the traffic engineer and, uh, and it will, I'll see what we can do. And, uh, but, but if it's not brought up to us, you know, if I, if I'm not in this area and I handle other areas, but if I handle this area and if it's not, if I'm not made aware, it's hard for me to, to make a decision which lights I have to fix. Make us aware and we're here to help you.
I appreciate that, I'll, I'll talk to you.
Next, please. This is, uh, to the east of Citrus. This is at Baranca Avenue over crossing. Uh, east of Baranca, next please. The Grand Avenue. East of Grand and Holt. Uh, this is pretty much where the, uh, segment three ends. Uh, with that, um, I'll ask Jennifer to come up and, uh, and go over the aesthetic features of the project.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Because I think we got a lot of issues here. It's probably premature to talk about the aesthetics, you know, when we're talking about sound walls and things like that. Can we hold the discussion? We'll have a, a study session right after the first of the year, if that's okay?
Definitely.
Okay, and maybe at that time, we can have our federal representatives here, get everybody in the room and talk about the issues. And then maybe even we could have the representatives that take care of the maintenance on the freeway come, too, so we can get everything at one time, so, okay? Thank you.
That's fine. Okay, so with that, uh, that will be the end of our presentation. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, that is concluding our presentation portion of our meeting. And our next item on the agenda is our oral communications. We have a five-minute speaking per speaker. Uh, we have yellow cards at the top of the stairs if you'd like to fill one out and speak on any items on the agenda or non-agendized items. Our first speaker is Pajeco Nakasato.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Piero Nakasato. I live in two, four, one, seven Gloria Street, West Covina. Ninety-eight graduate from Nogales High School, honorably discharged from the United States Marine Corps, December two thousand eight. I am an active member of the community and volunteer two nights a week, teaching and coaching for a free after-school program based out of Nogales High School. I am also a board member of my foundation for a better future. I'm here on behalf of my family to support Mr. Frederick Sykes. I have known Mr. Sykes for two years. He is a family man with integrity and an overwhelming desire to help his community. He's an active resident and retired deputy sheriff. For the last couple of years, I have noticed in West Covina becoming less of a small-town community and more of a corporate environment. I think Mr. Sykes represents the people and the values of my family. When the council has a majority voice, people like Roger Hernandez and Mr. Sykes represents the common working family. They are the voice of the residents and they're the voice of the residents that unfortunately can't make these meetings. I consider Mr. Sykes a friend and an asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Armando Torres.
Good evening, my name is Fernando Torres. I'm a resident and property owner at twelve, twenty-seven South Neff. I am here to endorse Fred Sykes. I am not a politically motivated person and choose to focus my energies in other areas such as my faith and my family. But frankly, after the difficulty that we experienced with the cell tower, with the lack of the city response to calls and letters, I find myself motivated for the lack of both my faith and my family to be here today. I speak to the mayor and the city council who have the ultimate responsibility for this decision. We, as a community, spoke, but the one candidate for the position of the city council member was Fred, and Fred listened. Fred was, has been at least, has been at these meetings for a long time. I know, I've been here back and forth. I was here and I saw him, always speaking on behalf of the people. Not because he was appointed by someone on the city council, but because he cares about the community. I have researched his ideas and his methods of approaching issues and I feel confident that he will represent the residents properly and not on, not for his own interests. Many people I have spoken to who know Fred speak highly of him. And these are people whose opinion I value very much. He is a man of integrity and he makes time to listen. For these reasons and much more, or many other reasons, listen to your residents who would like to see him representing us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Raul Lopez.
Good evening, my name is Raul Lopez. I'm currently a resident of West Covina and I live at ten, twenty-one East Merced. I'm here to endorse, uh, Mr. Fred Sykes. I believe he is a strong candidate who has displayed integrity, dedication, knowledge, empathy, compassion and professionalism, uh, since I've known him, which is very impressive. He's in touch with, uh, West Covina residents and issues that concern us in everyday life. So, um, that's all I have to say for right now. He's a great guy and I trust him very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dana Sykes.
Well, good evening. Well, first of all, I'm glad Clearwire did back down and withdraw the cell tower. Reason why I say that is because cell towers do not belong in residential areas. Cell towers belong in like, for instance, nine fifty Lake Drive, which is obviously looking for somebody to inhabit it. They belong in areas that people's houses will not be affected. Because personally, those things are hideous-looking. I've never seen one that looks like a tree. And if I, if you want to plant something, do please plant real trees that give the earth something to nourish. I believe in recycling. I believe in taking care of what I brought into this life and that is my daughter. And which we do all do better, for our children, we'd be better off. Secondly, I wanna, my friend is here from, who lives down the street and she had a little accident at her house and the fire department was called. And I know she's still a little shy, so I will say it for it. She wants to thank the fire department for the wonderful job they did and they were very professional and very thorough when they were at her house. So, that's for my, that's for my girlfriend right there. She's, um, I know she would love to say that if the fire, if anybody from the fire department's here, that's, uh, definitely, I want to give the fire department a head, a heads up. And last but not least, I want to notice we do have our empty spot. I want to congratulate our new assembly member who was sworn in yesterday. That is Assembly Member Roger Hernandez. And he was always working for us as residents and I'm glad, I'm glad we have someone in the state capital that is working hard for us again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeffrey Howell.
Hello, council, citizens of West Covina. I've lived in West Covina for over thirty-three years and I've had the company of Fred Sykes for many years. He's been a diligent, hard-working neighbor, person, and he has always tried to deal with things in a fair way. He's been a very honest person, one that you could trust. And, uh, we really appreciate him. Uh, the citizens of West Covina have really stated how they feel about Fred Sykes and his wife. They're here at the council meetings all the time. They have an endeavor to do a good job and lead the citizens in the right direction. And I certainly endorse Fred Sykes for the councilman that replaces Roger Hernandez. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Anthony Duarte.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, council members and city staff. Uh, my name's Anthony Duarte. I am the new district director for our new assembly member, Roger Hernandez. Uh, originally, I was coming here to say a few words on the assembly member's behalf about the cell tower, but he is very excited to learn that Clearwire had decided to become a good corporate partner to the community and, and withdraw its appeal. Uh, so we thank them for that. And I want to just extend our hand to the city. Um, any issues with the state, you know, we had a long discussion today with, about Caltrans. That's something that definitely we can, we can help out with. And so, you know, I'd love to work with city staff, uh, on something like that. Uh, prior to working for, accepting the position with the assembly member, I worked with Congressman Chu, so that's may how I may have interacted with many of you and I definitely interacted with the staff before through the congressman's office. And I look forward to working with all of you in my new capacity. Uh, and I also wanted to thank all the community members here today that came out to spoke about, to speak about the Clearwire cell tower. Uh, it's what, without the community involvement, coming to speak to their council members, getting engaged in issues, you know, Clearwire would have never dropped their appeal. So, I want to thank you guys for coming out. Uh, congratulations, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming to our meeting and it's nice to meet you. Our next speaker is Jess Ramirez.
Good evening, my name is Jesse Ramirez. Um, I'm a coach from West Covina U Soccer. I wanted to give you guys all a heads up about a new program that West Covina is actually promoting. It's called TOPS. And they're gonna be, um, targeting, well, the program is meant for autistic kids, so it's, um, for their particular, um, you know, we're gonna be, actually, we're gonna be, um, we're gonna be teaming up with this program, with this company, TOPS, so that we could, um, again, we can promote and we can give, um, these players an alternative so that we could, uh, so everyone, you know, can, um, there's been an outpour of, uh, parents that want to get their kids in that type of atmosphere. And so, uh, that, um, I also wanted to, um, address some concerns about Edgewood. Uh, there's a, um, we've, um, I've been experiencing, uh, an outpour of traffic. And I've, um, discussed it with the, um, with the city already as far as implementing some speed humps or speed bumps, uh, or, you know, get some sort of, um, traffic control through, um, Trojan, which is the dropout point for, um, Edgewood High School. And also Durness, which is a dropout point for, um, the middle school of Edgewood. So, all along that, um, area, we've been noticing, I've been noticing a lot of congestion and traffic. I walked to my, uh, to pick up my daughter at San Jose Edison and I use orange and between, um, three o'clock, um, there is a concern of, um, the flow of traffic and the speed of traffic. These motorists are not, um, are not giving, uh, residents the right-of-way to, um, the crosswalks. And it's a concern because there's a lot of kids during their, um, when the, um, when the school is off. And so, um, if you can get the police department to go out there and monitor that and have their presence available during their, um, during after-school. So, we, and, um, last but not least, um, Mr. Skyes, you know, I've spoke with some of the residents and some of the participants or the parents, um, they're all concerned about the direction of where West Covina is going. They're noticing a lot of businesses closing. They're noticing, um, programs cut. So, we're, um, Mr. Skyes has come, um, has come around and, um, and I spoke with him briefly and a lot of issues from, um, you know, from Bell, the city was happening in Bell, to what's happening out here in West Covina. And there's a concern. I'm not so much into politics, but I want to, I moved out here because to give, um, my, um, family a better way of life other than now where we used to live in L.A. So, um, again, I would like to see businesses open up and not close. Same with restaurants. So, um, and Mr. Skyes, I think he would be, um, someone that would, um, actually have, um, some vision and, um, and some goals for our city and help us out in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. John Solis.
Good evening, uh, city council. My name is, uh, John Solis. I'm a resident at West Covina. It's been a long time since I've been here. Hopefully, absence makes the heart go fonder, at least from my perspective. Mr. Tui is smiling. It's good to see you smile. Uh, I'm here to address item fifteen on the agenda, which is, um, filling the vacancy of the city council by either appointment or special election. Obviously, we don't want a special election, that costs money. And the residents that are here talking today would prefer an appointment, as I would. And Fred Sykes is my friend and neighbor, as each one of you are as well. And I trust Fred, I've known him for quite a few years and he is active in the city, very active. And obviously, we all don't share the same opinions. Fred has had some different opinions than the city council, but it's, it's for the good. I mean, when you, you look at the Washington DC, not everybody agrees, but they all work together. And I think Fred Sykes, my neighbor, and I trust him very much, will work with each one of you to, for the better, betterment of the city of West Covina. And last, I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Hurford and Tui for speaking up on the Caltrans issues, especially the trash along Interstate Ten. I think, um, it's been a long time that nobody has done anything about it. And I was a little disappointed on the gentleman that was sitting over there that kind of got antagonistic. Uh, I don't know why he was doing that. You had every right to bring up the issues, especially taking money away from our city, Mr. Tui. That's a very good issue. So, with that, uh, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Mr. Fred Sykes, a trusted companion and friend and neighbor, as all of you are. And I'd like to wish all of you a happy holidays and to all, a good night.
Okay, we're adjourned now. Um, thank you for coming tonight. Uh, the next speaker is Armando Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and residents of West Covina. Thanks for coming out. As I came in, I saw a lot of people leaving, but they were happy because we don't know the long-term effects on these little machines in our hands here that we carry. And to me, a cellphone, if it drops, oh, well, they'll call me back, or I'll go to a landline. It's not a big issue, especially at work. I work at a hospital, Kaiser, the big one down here on Walton Park. I have no signal there. Am I complaining? No. But the future of our children is more important because we don't know the long-term effects. But I'm here to talk, to endorse Mr. Sykes. If there's an appointment, this man has walked the streets of my neighborhood. He's ran. He's, he's gotten thousands of votes. Unfortunately, a lot of people are apathetic in the local elections, which that's, that's the majority of the United States here. But I feel that he's updated my family. He's, he's got my section of the area of West Covina. I live in the southeast area, the forgotten part over there on Morganfield. He's brought a lot of stuff to my attention and, and helped me out. I've been more active, coming from a big campaign against a union, which there was an appointed trustee. I never liked trustees because they run the show, and I'm really against people that have no idea of what the people want. And I feel that Fred Sykes would be a good choice for an appointee because he's walked the streets. I took care of him at Kaiser one time when he, he injured himself a couple of years back on his bike, riding to work. So I know that he's, he's for conserving the, you know, the earth as far as using up the, the natural resources and gasoline and whatnot. But I'm here to, hopefully, that if he gets appointed, he will do a real good job for the city. He will look for the interest of not just where he lives, but for all the areas of West Covina. And we can strive with businesses and create more jobs, create a better environment and parks with, for our kids and our future. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Council. Before I begin, I would just hope everybody will remember what today is. Today is Pearl Harbor Day. And give thanks to all of our World War II veterans and tell them thank you for their service. Now, council members, tonight you have to decide how you will fill the empty council seat that was left open by the council member Hernandez's departure. I would hope that you would take applications for the position. And when you do, don't consider just those who might have run for the office in the past. It shouldn't matter how many votes one person got when they ran, they still lost because the majority of the residents decided they weren't right for the person for the job. When you do decide, make sure this person really cares about the whole city and not just part of our city. I would hope you would ask, how has this person stayed involved with the things that matter to the whole city? Will this person have an open mind on things that come up that might not be very popular and decide what is best for our city? Look outside your comfort zone. For someone who will stand on their own two feet, you don't need someone who will always agree with the way you do. Remember, the whole city will be watching. You might not care what everyone thinks about who you pick to fill this seat. Whoever you pick will reflect back on you and will tell us just what you really think and if, and if you really care what we think. Last, I would hope you would pick someone who is willing to work with this council and not against it. We have enough problems in our city with the economy the way it is. We need solutions to our problems, not more problems without any solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our oral communications portion of the meeting. I did have one quick thing for Mr. Yahtzee or the city manager in reference to the speakers this evening. There was one that mentioned some concerns about the traffic over at Edgewood. I don't know if there's something that maybe we can look into there or to see what we can do.
We can look into that.
Okay, thank you very much. And I know there was some mention of some businesses closing, and we're all, you know, unfortunately, a part of this economy. And as a business owner myself, find it difficult to pay all the fees. I think forty-five percent of our income is probably paid into the state and federal government, and I think that is being very difficult for businesses right now. There's so much red tape for us. It's so difficult, I feel horrible for most of these businesses here. And we, as a council, are doing everything we possibly can to be business-friendly. And I know also, too, something was mentioned about political things. Something was mentioned that some information was going out that we're all being invested by, made by the DA, which is a complete out-there, made-up thing. It's really unfortunate that people have to kind of go to that level. So I just wanted to assure everybody that that is not the case. I was informed by the city manager's office today that there was something being said. So with that, unless any other, other council members have any comments, we will continue with the remainder of our meeting. Any other comments? Okay. Next is our consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve our consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Our next is our public hearing for the adoption of the California Building and California Fire Code ordinance. Let's all get to our. This matter is set for public hearing for the adoption of the building standards codes for the 2010 edition of the California Building Code and the 2010 Fire Code and other various codes. Will city clerk please verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Thank you so much. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the West Covina Codes adoption. We'll have a presentation of the staff report, and then we'll hear comments from the public. Mr. City Manager, who will present this?
Mr. Yahtzee will do a brief report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. About every three years, the state of California adopts upgraded and revised building codes and fire standards. These codes are then published, and a city must adopt and enforce those codes within six months. If a city wishes to revise or amend those codes, they must do it during that time, and that requires a public hearing. Tonight's hearing will introduce and adopt the ordinance that carries over most of the previous building and fire code amendments, such as administrative rules, fees, fire sprinkler requirements, fireproof roofing requirements, and swimming pool fencing local amendments. The main changes to the code this year, the California codes, are very minor. However, the two major changes to the state code are the adoption of the residential building code, which will require fire sprinklers in all residential buildings, and also the adoption of the green building code, which requires stricter energy efficiency requirements. This year's amendments also include a clarification of major alterations as it pertains to fire sprinkler requirements in existing buildings. It includes a clarification to the definition of swimming pools. It includes a change that it would allow the city manager to appoint a board of appeals to expedite developments that might wish to appeal a code interpretation. And it includes some defining verbiage to allow better enforcement against trespassing in unsafe buildings. If the city does not approve the ordinance tonight, the California codes and building standards will become effective without the local amendments on January first, 2011. With that, I or the fire chief are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff by council? Okay, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, have you received any written protests or objections?
No protests or objections have been received.
Okay, thank you. Then, at this time, is there anyone present who wishes to comment on the item? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this hearing and ask for any city council discussion or motion is in order.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Tuie.
I would like to change item ninety-one, or nine oh one point two point one to, it's a provision for when sprinklers start on remodeling that for it to be twelve thousand square feet, which is what the state fire code and state fire marshal have as the law. We have it where it's five thousand square feet. And the appeals board, I would prefer to be appointed by the council over the city manager, the way it's written in that section seven dash eighteen point eight. Everything else is fine.
Okay. Do I need a, well, do I have a motion? Do I have a second to approve those two changes?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any concern to those changes, Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I was moving, maybe a moment.
I'm having a sidebar.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, that can be the, incorporated into the ordinance this evening. However, it will go back to, tonight would then be first reading, and then it would become back before your next meeting for adoption. So with that motion, then it's.
I'm okay with that.
But the public hearing is held and closed tonight. You won't have to come back to the public hearing. It would only be on your agenda, consent agenda, actually, for adoption.
For a second. I have no problem with that.
Okay. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay, roll call vote. If any member may abstain, so I guess we can go have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. We don't need to read heading of the ordinance, Mr. City Attorney or Ms.? Okay. Thank you very much. We're done with our public hearing. And on to our agenda item number fifteen, Department Rhetorical Matters, City Attorney's Office, the presentation for filing the vacancy. Mr. City Manager, would that be the city attorney to do the report? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. In your agenda packet is a outline of the, of the options available for the city council in filling the recently vacated seat by former council member Hernandez. The primary matters for the council's evaluation is whether or not to fill the vacancy by appointment or by calling a special election. If you decide to go down the process of filling the vacancy by appointment, you may do so in any manner in which the city council deems fit and appropriate. State law, the state elections code or government code does not define specific procedures for carrying out an appointment process. There is no requirement to advertise the vacancy, take applications, or conduct interviews. However, that's totally within the discretion of the city council. It should also be noted that the codes do not mandate that the vacancy be filled by any candidate who has run in a previous election. To summarize this process, the vacancy to be filled can be in the manner, process, or whatever decision the city council deems is appropriate. If you fill the vacancy by appointment, you must make that appointment within thirty days from the vacancy which occurred yesterday. The second option is to call for a special election. Again, if you decide to call for a special election, that decision will have to be made within thirty days of the date of the vacancy. That special election, if called, would have to be held no sooner than one hundred and fourteen days from the call of the election. Pursuant to the California Elections Code, the next regularly scheduled election date, if you call for a special election, would be the, the date of June seventh, 2011. Of course, as the council is well aware, if you go through the route of a special election, it would only be to fill the unexpired term, which would end in November 2011, and of course, the cost of the election, which is estimated at one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That concludes my report. I'm available to address any questions the city council may have with respect to these options.
Any questions of the city attorney? Councilmember Tuie.
We no longer have the option to leave it vacant.
Well, you have thirty days in which to do so. If you, the way the law reads, that if you do not fill it within thirty days, the city clerk is then obligated to call for a special election. Because there is a special election date that is available prior to the November 2011, a regular election date, the clerk would then call, as a matter of law, the, for the special election in June. Unfortunately, and as, as odd as it may seem, which that election would only provide for a council seat to be filled for four months, unfortunately, if you don't, the only other manner in which that would take place is if someone files suit against the city to call for that special election. So if you, if you leave the seat vacant, that's really not an option that's set forth under current law.
No problem. I think we've only had a vacancy one other time where there was time left on it, and that was when I believe Chet Shear passed away in office and Richard Lewis was appointed. No problem.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. With that, comments? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, and I think some of the speakers addressed this as far as the cost of the election being one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't see us doing that in this economic situation. I do support filling the vacancy by appointment, and I would like to see us open up a application process that is open for seven days, take applications from anyone who qualifies according to the code, and at the next council meeting, if we can come to any kind of agreement, then we appoint.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Any other comments, or do I have a second on the motion? I'll second it. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're going to take applications, and then we'll come back. I think that will be a good thing. I know when we did the planning commissions and all that, that was a, a good process. Even, it was kind of interesting because you got to see the different people and what they did and how they were involved, and it was pretty exciting, so.
And so, just so staff is clear, the motion is to, to keep the application process open for a seven-day period, which would then end next Wednesday, if we start tomorrow, or Tuesday, I should say, following Tuesday, the fourteenth.
That's enough time to put it on the next agenda, right?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And at this time, we have any mayor, council member, commissioner reports? Any ABT one-two-threes? No? Okay. Then, at this time, we have this community, the CDC Commission requests for reports, studies, investigations. We have councilmember Tuie request for city financial audit contracts.
I will go ahead and hold my item till the next meeting so we can go ahead and deal with the reorganization.
Okay. At this time, we are reorganizing our council. I have outgoing comment time. I know everybody wants to go home. It's holidays, so why have to do your shopping? I appreciate this opportunity, and it is always an honor to sit up here and do a good, you know, job and represent the people in the best way that I possibly can. I am looking forward to turning over the gavel to Mayor Pro Tem Hurford. He does a wonderful job, has been. How many times have you been elected? Five?
Five.
Five times. So the people must like you. I know councilmember Lane has been elected twice, myself, three, and Mike, you, you're four? Four. So, you know, I, I see the businesses in the community, we're, we care, we want to be here for you. Again, it's an honor, and I just want to say thank you. And thank you to the people that put me here to, to serve you. And at this time, we will entertain a motion because our code and ordinance requires us to do a process. And so I'm looking for a motion to appoint Mayor Steve Hurford as mayor.
Motion to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Steve Hurford for mayor.
Okay. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And, you know, has to affirmative four votes. And now we have Michael Tuie as Mayor Pro Tem. I will make that motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we are done. And so now, I'm going to turn the, the mic over to Mayor Hurford.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. First act that I have as mayor is to present you with your outgoing gavel and plaque and say to you, it was a very difficult year, and every year forward for a while is going to be difficult, but you held our city together. You always were dignified and respectful of everybody who came before the dais, and want to thank you for your service to our city this year. You and your family are a great asset to our community, and thank you for your service.
Thanks.
Do you want to say something? Councilwoman?
I would. I just wanted to, to say thank you to, to our past mayor. You served with grace and honor, and you always do a great job in representing us and our city and our council. So with that, I'm proud that you're my friend, and I'm proud to serve with you. So thank you for your passion.
Thank you. Councilmember Tuie.
Same thing with me, Shelley. It's been a pleasure serving with you. The residents may not always understand because they may not, all of them been here during that. Everyone on the council comes with some type of issue, and that's why they ran, no different than a lot of the people that want to be appointed. And I know during that. Everyone on the council comes with some type of issue, and that's why they ran, no different than a lot of the people that want to be appointed. Um, and I know, Shelley, you were very passionate when they were gonna go, uh, when the Valencia Heights Water Company was selling the property behind you for condos. And, um, it, it's just like no different than any other. Steve had his issue. I had my issue when my business was burned down. Everyone comes, um, with, uh, with issues of how they had to deal with, or what they liked to see, and I, I really appreciate, um, what you always try to do and how you run your meetings. I greatly respect that, and, um, it's always been a true pleasure to know you, your husband Scott, and your kids. So, I greatly appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm just gonna make some brief incoming statements. Let me just say that, uh, the city of West Covina, as, as many cities around, um, is faced with many challenges. Number one is economic. This council, more than ever, has to run this city like a business. As you saw tonight with Caltrans, there's, there's severe threats to throwing up sound walls in front of businesses. Uh, we have severe threats from the state continually taking our money. Uh, we have regulations from both federal and state government that tie our hands at times, and we have, uh, contracts and, uh, revenue issues that will be severe this year. So, I, I enter into this office with, uh, the goal of trying to lead this council in the direction to protect our city and get us on course for the next, uh, few years. Whether we're successful or not, I don't know. A lot depends on the, the team that our city staff has put together, um, on our employees, on our residents. We need people to shop in West Covina, spend their money here. And so I look forward to a challenging year, and hopefully a rewarding one for all of us. And I look forward to working with the four of you, and, uh, hopefully, a new member of our city council. So, thank you. Okay. At this time, uh...
I have a hand over here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Lane.
I just wanted to congratulate you again tonight on becoming mayor for a fifth term. I mean, that's a pretty remarkable feat, and, um, I look forward to working with you this year, and I know it's gonna be a tough year, but you will guide us through a tumultuous year, and I'm sure you will represent us with, uh, great dignity, so, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Councilmember Tuie.
Likewise, Steve. I want to congratulate you. I know earlier this year, you became the long time, the, the longest-serving council member in the city's history, and, um, I just always look forward to, uh, as I met you, a lot of you may not know how I met him, but after my business burned down, I was having problems getting people out to try to help me out, and I came down on that side of the podium, that's where everyone starts, and basically cried here, because, you know, I was trying to get someone out. My business had firebombed in three, um, three times in 54 days, back starting on July 8th of 1991, and he was the only council member that was here that offered to come out and do stakeouts with me. So, it built a different type of bond when he was willing to go out over and above. A lot of the people that were here tonight, a lot of them are from my dear area, and I, I've known a lot of you guys, uh, for many years, so, um, it's just different. But Steve, that moved me and my family back then in 1991, and I'm glad we still continue today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, um, we're going to move on to the item with regards to the sanitation district representative. Now, I, as mayor, will sit on the sanitation district board of directors, but we require that, uh, there be a alternate, and nominations will be in order for that alternate.
I nominate, uh, Mayor Protem Tuie.
And I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, aye. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, uh, nothing under the council, Community Development Commission comments, so a motion would be in order for adjournment. I believe we have one, or maybe two. Uh, adjournments in honor of people. Uh, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Mrs. Madeline Mary Antonovich, sister of Los Angeles County Supervisor Michael Antonovich. And, uh, it's with sadness that we inform everyone that Vicky Shalaga's mother, Maybel Audra Green, passed away. Donna and Vicky Shalaga are great supporters of the National Night Out and other, other West Covina community events, so I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting in their honor.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?